Needles, can you take roll call for record please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Baako, Commissioner Whitaker, Commissioner Godioso.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
Myself, George Needles, President.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to our Board of Commissioners meeting. Prior to our meeting, we have a seven o'clock ordinance hearing to... For a proposed ordinance amending the zoning ordinance section six oh, six hundred dash nine to add the definitions of a brewery, brew pub, microbrewery, restaurant, restaurant fast food, restaurant fast casual, restaurant full service tavern and taproom, and identify permitted locations for the defined uses and to establish parking requirements for the defined user. We'll be having the ordinance hearing tonight as indicated. After we have our little discussion, I will give in the call number and the code for anybody that would have any public comments for the proposed ordinance change. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor, Mike Pierce, and he will run through the presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, this is a matter which is scheduled for a public hearing to receive comments or questions from anybody associated with the amendment to our zoning hearing board, this, or zoning hearing ordinance rather. This matter and public hearing has been duly advertised in accordance with the municipality's planning code, and part of that requirement is that we have an opportunity prior to the consideration of passage of this amendment to the ordinances to allow for additional public comment or public comment made to the commissioners regarding these changes and these changes only to the zoning ordinance. This is the matter that has been presented to the Board of Commissioners over the past several months. Ms. Kelly, Mr. Needles, myself, and Mr. Seidel have worked at length trying to get this into a situation to allow and permit those types of businesses, as we have had several inquiries within the township, of being able to present those type of restaurants, brew pubs, and our zoning ordinance did not necessarily allow for that as a permitted use. We were able to investigate and had probably a half a dozen of these type ordinances from different municipalities throughout the region and throughout the state to make sure that what we were getting in Upper Chichester was not only state of the art but was consistent with the uses as well as providing the township with the ability to control any growth or uses specifically related to these items. At this point, there have been no changes since the drafts that have been presented to you at the past several meetings. Again, this has been advertised and has been available for public review and comment, and with that, I would entertain, or Ms. Kelly can also entertain any questions or comments that we may have, and it would be appropriate to open the floor for public comment or the electronic comment related to this ordinance only.
Thank you. So at this moment, I will take any comments from our board members on the ordinance.
Thanks to Ms. Kelly's suggestion. Penn State Extension Campus recently had a virtual presentation on Brew Tap, Brew, this entire subject, and it really is an exciting prospect if you can get something that will come in and improve the walkability of our neighborhoods. And I think, you know, that ties in with our whole town image or the improvement that we hope to make, so I'm all in favor of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Neary. The other questioner?
No, I just, I'm in favor also, you know, echo on Joe's comments. They're an up and coming thing. They're pretty popular now, and all of them I've seen do well.
At this moment, I will take citizen comments. Citizens may dial in. The phone number to dial in is five seven one seven four eight four zero two one. Again, the call on number, five seven one seven four eight four zero two one. Code to enter is three zero seven eight one four zero two nine pound. Again, the code is three zero seven eight one four zero two nine pound. To mute your phone, please dial star six. After muting your phone, please state your name, your address, then begin your comment. You'll be given two minutes to speak and be placed back on mute after your comment. Please, just a note to the public that we will be only taking comments on the ordinance hearing at this moment. If you have any comments for general questions about the township in a whole, we'll be taking those comments at our seven thirty meeting. With that said, I will give us two minutes to see if anybody will call in. Another thirty seconds and nobody calls in. All right. Let the record show that there are no citizens' comments. I'd just like to thank Mr. Michael Pierce, our Township Manager Barbara Kelly, and our Township Manager George Needles for working on this ordinance and for getting it to this point. I think it will be a positive impact for our community as well, and we will be voting on this at our regular commission. At this moment, we have a motion, motion to adjourn our meeting. Motion, motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. We'll start our regular commission.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our May thirteenth, seven thirty meeting for Board of Commissioners of Upper Chichester Township. At this moment, I'd like to ask our Township Manager to take our roll call.
Sure thing. Commissioner Baako.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker. Commissioner Godioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Lisa Catania.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, President.
Thank you. Before we move on to citizens' comments, I'd like to have a brief presentation from Wells Fargo. There've been some ADA improvements on the Wells Fargo location on Chichester Avenue. So with that said, I'd like to have the representative come up, introduce himself to the board, and give a brief presentation. Tom, if you'd like to pull your mask down to speak easier, I'm okay with that.
Great, great. My name's Tom Pugley. I'm from North Star Design. We're the site engineers on the improvements for the Wells Fargo Bank at thirty-four hundred Chichester Avenue. The scope of the improvements... Yes, for starters, do you have a copy of the plan? I sent it over. Do you need to physically see it, or do you?
I think we were told that it would be presented up on the wall, so we'll be able to see it.
Okay. So what we're looking at there is the overall site plan, which was sheet five of our set that was previously designed. So the overall scope of the work here was to update the existing ADA improvements that are on the site and bring them up into conformance. The main focus was to provide a handicap accessible route from the parking spaces to the building, from the right of way, Chichester Avenue, to the building, from the parking spaces to the ATM, and to provide an ADA compliant ATM. That was the main scope of our initial improvements. As a result of doing that, we ended up providing more impervious surfaces, which by ordinance require some stormwater, so during the process with that, we provided a, an area to the west, which is the top of the page, behind the ATM, that is a porous paver section that would offset some of the increase in the stormwater runoff. So that whole area is approximately eight parking spaces. Rous paver. We also have reduced the amount of impervious coverage. The western area, the area behind the bank towards the top of the page, that was all asphalt, and as a result of the improvements, we put in some landscape islands to better define the parking spaces as well as to break up the... And during the approval process, there was our request to find an enclosure around the existing dumpster. There are two dumpsters, one for garbage and one for recycling. It's located in the southwest corner of the existing bank, and so right now they're just sitting loose in the asphalt area. We're going to put in... That's really the scope of the improvements.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from our Board of Commissioners?
Do you want to touch on the walkway from the, from Chichester Avenue that was recommended by the Delaware County Planning Department?
Sure. In order to provide access from Chichester Avenue, we did provide an ADA compliant sidewalk that would go about midway through the property and go straight up to the front door. That way, the site's ADA compliant as well as the access to the right of way. There is another stretch of sidewalk along Chichester Avenue that at the planning commission had requested that we fix that. Under the existing conditions, the sidewalk kind of had to jog down towards the, toward the curb line, so it wasn't a consistent pattern going down. We replaced, ripped out the sidewalk there and then put a grass strip between the sidewalk and the curb and basically carried the same alignment of the sidewalk through the rest of the property down to the northern drive line.
Tom, you'll have to remind me. So the existing condition, if someone was to walk to the property, they would have to enter the property through the paved area, correct?
Correct.
So now they have a defined access point, so people that, you know, making it a more walkable location, correct?
That's correct. Under the existing conditions, the sidewalk from the right of way was not provided.
Any other questions from the board? Tom, again, I'd like to thank you for working with our planning board and with the Board of Commissioners and with our engineer. I think it's going to be a vast improvement to our community. Like I said, you know, we love having Wells Fargo as our neighbor and hope to see you here in the years to come, so thank you again. We're going to move on to our citizens' comments. I don't believe that we're going to have many comments on here, but if you just want to hang out in case anybody has any questions, you might be able to answer them.
Sure.
And then later on during the meeting, we'll... ... go into resolution. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if not, you know, you're welcome to go also, but...
Do you want me to stick around for a certain portion of it?
Yeah, I'm going to take, at this moment in time, I'm going to move on to citizens' comments. So if there's any comments about this particular subject, maybe you can...
Sure.
... address them, and then after we move, after we move on from citizens' comments, you're more than welcome to stay for the meeting or... Thank you.
Thank you.
So as indicated, we'll be taking citizens' comments at this moment. We'll do the call-ins first. The call-in, please dial five seven one seven four eight four zero two one. Again, the call on number is five seven one seven four eight four zero two one. Code to enter is three zero seven eight one four zero two nine pound. Again, the code to enter is three zero seven eight one four zero two nine pound. To mute your phone, please dial star six. After muting your phone, state your name, your address, then begin your comment. Given two minutes to speak, and then you can place back on hold after your comment. So at this moment, give a minute or so to take any call-ins, and we'll start the time now. Give it another thirty seconds. If nobody calls in, we'll move on. All right, let's let the record show. There were no call-ins for tonight's meeting. At this moment in time, I will take in-person comments. Is there anybody present that would like to make any comments at all? This is for the people that are listening to virtually. Can you please state your name and address?
My name is Mark Rahana. I'm resident of West Thomas Manor. And today I came here to talk about the culture of the community that I live in for twenty-two years. Doing the dirt bike is making a lot of noise. Especially during the weekend. We have stress, we have... In the speed of the bikes that goes in four ninety-one, that Damon's road, back there where it's, I don't know who owned that land. It goes on... We have the dollar store something. In the hours, the nine o'clock, that will be a lot of traffic.
Are you referring to dirt bikes?
The dirt bikes and the good bikes.
So I know we've been working constantly on dirt bikes and ATVs that are being driven throughout the township. The only thing I can tell you, you know, if it's happening, if you're dialing nine one one and the police are coming over to assess the situation, we have, we have consistently tried to control that. Well, if you're saying that they're speeding going down Damon's Road?
Damon's Road, meeting house road.
That was...
Section, I go out to myself and he's...
Mark, when you say, say bike, are you speaking like of a motorcycle?
Yeah.
Again, you know, we can, we can... I know, but I, there's really nothing else we can do. You know, we can talk to our chief police again, maybe set up some type of traffic detail or some... Put up a, see if we can catch any speeders along that road, and we can talk to him about that. Well, I'll let our Township Manager handle this question because, you know, we've been dealing on it on a regular basis.
Who owns that property back there?
I have no idea. It's my, my boss.
Who?
So the, my best suggestion is to, when you hear it, dial nine one one. We did recently update our ordinance to be a little bit more stringent on ATVs and dirt bikes, so when they respond, if they catch the individual there, there's allowance for them to issue fines, pretty substantial fines if they're not obeying the law. There's certain requirements where they have to have permission from the landowner, proof of permission from the landowner. It has to have been submitted to the township prior to them utilizing it. There's, there's... Part of the ordinance is about the time that they can be doing it, the amount of time consistently they can be driving. There's all different factors in there, but that is, it's nine one one. You have to call nine one one and report it specifically at any time of the day, but on the weekends, there, we do not, you know, the township offices are not going to be able to help you. We might be able to send someone out to take a look and see what's going on during the week if it's happening, but you still want to call nine one one because that is a police matter. Just dial nine one one, let them know what it is, and they'll respond. Uh, yeah, well, our ordinance is available online. It's a public ordinance. I mean, I... They do have... Yeah, they, they do have ATVs, and when they get calls for this type of thing, and they are aware that it happens over there, when they get a call, that is typically they'll either use that to respond, or they may go out with like the dog, or whatever is, whatever means necessary they need to get there. Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's not new. It's not new. It's been going on since I've been sitting up, up top here every year, and it was this, Mark. Right, Mark, this, this board, when I got on board was, we adopted the very first ordinance for the ATV. Within the past six months or so, Mr. Pierce, we made it stricter. The bottom line is, and we keep telling everybody, my phone blows off the hook every time this time of the year, same time in the fall, and the documentation gives our chief knowing what time to get the ATVs over there. We will not put our men in jeopardy to chase people on the street with these ATVs. We have to catch them. That's the bottom line. You're right. It's a nuisance. It happens every time. This is not new to us. And I guarantee, and I guarantee you, Mark, all right.
We have done in the past two more. I don't, you can't, you can't do that.
It's private property. Nah.
That's overstepping, that's government overstepping their, their boundaries to force people to put gates and fences.
And the answer to your other question, Mark, yes, Dollar General is limited to time now because they're still hiring people. They cannot hire enough people to stay open until nine o'clock. So eventually, once they start filling their positions, they would like to be open until nine o'clock.
Mark, we are, we go through this every single year. You know, our police are, our police force is aware of it. They, they do monitor situations. There are times where they go out there, and the time to get there, the, the individual has left, and there's times where we've actually called them. So it's going to be an ongoing battle with us. But we're not ignoring it, and we are, and we are trying to monitor it and control the situations as best as possible. Thank you. There's no other citizens' comments tonight. We'll move on to our regular meeting. So at this point in time, can I have approval of the minutes for the April eighth, twenty twenty-one Board of Commissioners meeting?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Just also like to make a brief, brief announcement. I made this announcement last week. We met in executive session at our caucus meeting to discuss various litigation and personnel matters. So with that said, we'll move on to our motions to consider resolutions, and I will have our vice chairman, Mr. Joe Baako, read items number six through ten.
Thank you. First one is, consider a motion authorizing the township engineer to solicit bids for the two thousand twenty-one Upper Chichester Township Road Program.
Second. Motion and a second. There's no comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a resolution authorizing Michael Godioso, President, Board of Commissioners, to sign all documents related to agreement number zero six three one one three four regarding the acquisition, construction, and maintenance of the improvements to the local road system with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That's Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Consider a motion accepting agreement number zero six three one one three four regarding the acquisition, construction, and maintenance of the improvements to local road system with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Second. Motion and a second. Comments? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the resignation of Gary Beam from his position in the Upper Chichester Township Public Works Department, retroactive to February twenty-seven.
Chichester Township Public Works Department, retroactive to February 27th.
Twenty-seven, 2020.
It should be 2021.
Is that? Yes, yes, Bennett.
Retroactive, sorry.
Is this retired, or is this, he's resigned?
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
And maybe recognize him at a meeting? Any more questions on that one?
No, we're good.
Consider a motion authorizing an offer of employment be made to Stephen Schreiner as a full-time laborer in the Public Works Department, subject to pre-employment screening.
Motion in the second. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. For items number 11 through 19, I will be reading for consideration. Have a member of the board consider a resolution approving the land development ADA amendment plans prepared for Wells Fargo's Bank located at 3400 Chichester Avenue in Upper Chichester Township, prepared by Moore Star Design LLC Consulting Engineers and Surveyors, debated, dated December 7th, 2018, last revised April 29th, 2021.
Seconded.
Motion in the second. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is Resolution 2021-22.
Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow release number four for Pravko Pavilion Boothland LLC in the amount of $37,131.44.
Second.
Motion in the second. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is Resolution 2021-23.
Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow fund release for Mount Pleasant Baptist Church in the amount of $283.50.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Whitaker, second by Commissioner Neary. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is Resolution 2021-24.
Item number 15 on our agenda. Have a member of the board consider a motion authorizing the township manager to send the punch list to burger rental communities for the Willowbrook Club House project, requirements of the municipal planning.
Seconded.
Motion in the second. No comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Have a member of the, excuse me.
Need to go back one, go back one.
Fourteen. Ooh, sorry. Item number fourteen. Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow funds to be released for La Rosa Masonary in the amount of $140.
Second.
Motion in the second. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is Resolution 2021-25.
Item number sixteen on our agenda. Have a member of the board consider a motion accepting the extension granted by Dipnis Patel for his land development application for 242 Conchester Highway.
Second.
No comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number seventeen on our agenda. Have a member of the board consider a motion accepting the extension granted by Charles Karat, PLS, Antech, for his subdivision application for 820 Columbia Avenue.
Second.
Motion in the second. No comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number eighteen. Have a member of the board consider a motion authorizing the township engineer to solicit cost estimates for the remaining work at 2334 Douglas Street to complete the public improvements and work to satisfy the requirements of the previously issued grading permit.
So moved.
Question. What's that all about? I mean, is somebody, is this somebody else's permit? Grade permit, or did, that were?
Yeah, this, this is for Vincent Smith. Vincent Smith is a resident that's been working on building a house. He has had some issues over the period with some of the contractors. We were approached by his lawyer and asked to consider using his escrow monies to complete the public improvements and subsequent grading work for the property. To do that, we need to get a, an estimate to determine what the cost, what our costs would be to assure that we have enough money or to start negotiating with them to pay additional monies to take care of that.
And there's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number nineteen on our agenda. Have a member of the board consider a ordinance amending the zoning ordinance section 600-9 to add the definitions of brewery, brew pub, microbrewery, restaurant, restaurant fast food, restaurant fast casual, restaurant full service, tavern, and taproom, and identify permitted implications for the defined uses and to establish parking requirements for the defined uses.
Seconded.
Motion in the second. No comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is the 746 ordinance passed by the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chichester Township.
For items numbers 20 through 25 on our agenda, it will be read by Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consider a motion appointing McNeese Public Finance and Government Relations Group as bond counsel for Upper Chichester Township. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a resolution authorizing the destruction of certain township records in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Retention Act. So moved.
Seconded.
Motion in the second, second one's by Commissioner Greckas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is Resolution 2021-26.
Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to re-advertise the finance director position in Upper Chichester Township. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion is carried for number one.
I was about to say, I can't hear you. Go over there mumbling.
I said no.
Oh, okay.
Testing, testing.
Consider a motion approving the trash refund list 20-05. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of $745,708.76. So moved.
Second.
I'll give that one second to Commissioner Whitaker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Joe, I think you missed one. You missed number 23.
I thought we did. Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to send letters to all newly elected state officials representing Upper Chichester Township reaffirming their position that CWA should not be sold to a for-profit company. So moved.
Second. And to be clear, that's just the water authority.
Okay.
So motion in the second. Vice Chairman Joe Bahco, second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you to everyone for reading through those motions. At this time, we'll move on to our commissioners and professionals' report, and we will start off with Mr. Michael Pierce, our solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's copied my written reports containing the files. There are no additional action items on this time. I do want to take the time to acknowledge Miss Kelly, Miss Needles, Mr. Sidell, for their work in changing the brew pub ordinance. A lot of time and effort went into that to make sure that we were getting the best area for Upper Chichester so that we can identify potential businesses to come in. And I think it's work in progress. It took some time and effort, but it was well worth it in that particular. There were no additional matters that need, need to be addressed at this time. Everything is in.
Any questions for our solicitor? Now, we'll move on to our engineers' report, Ms. Lisa Companion.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy of my written report. As everyone is probably aware, Wawa is moving forward. We're actually digging some of the street skate. We saw a parrot. We have lights on some of the sidewalks are in, and they are, they are working on the foundations for the new wall. So things in real progress. Some of the given start. It's Glen is completed, and we have an invoice number three, and we have $12,47.70 in debt in, in the bills. Autozone is moving forward. We had a few hiccups. They hit quite a bit of rock, so they are far behind in their stormwater work, but they are through the rock now. We have holes spotting for the, the street traffic signal. But there are some poles that are going to be moved, and once Putt gets back, we need to speak with him. That intersection. Acosta Homes, we have a letter that's going out to Mr. Costa through the lack of, of ground cover. It is, so have that done before we give him any of our monies. Otherwise, I can tell you that over the street skate, and when that's a question, I'll answer those questions.
Any questions? Is there any questions for our township engineer? I just do have one. Wawa project, is there a pre-con meeting scheduled for the actual construction of the building coming up? We're thinking May 19th.
May 19th at 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, I know, we're at 9:00 AM, I didn't know. Thank you, George. Yes.
All right, just to let the public know that the project is moving along, and hopefully we will start seeing the construction of the actual building also. We're looking forward to that.
Is that in-person meeting?
Yeah, they're typically.
Usually does it on site.
Site, okay.
Please, I'm reading in your reports, 650 Cherry, Territory Road, that is, that development. Do we know where he's at? It says, sketch with eight lots was provided?
Came to the planning committee. There were several comments, and.
Okay.
There's no, there's no other questions for our township engineer, we'll move on to our township manager, George Needles.
Good evening, everybody. The, all reports are on file. Some of the work was mentioned with the Wawa and the streetlights going up. I just want to acknowledge the Board of Commissioners, the professionals, Barbara, and the rest of the staff here. You know, there's some really positive change going on in this community, and a lot of people are starting to see it. We're getting a lot of inquiries about what's going on and how people can be part of this. So I think it's going to, you're going to start to see some, some rapid improvements. And I know that this board's been working on that for a long time, so it's just really good to see. And I don't know about you, but I, you know, visit all of these projects every day to check on the status and just to, you know, kind of see where we're at and really make, it's your good feeling of the fruits of your labor. You get to see what you've been working on for years, so.
Yeah, thanks, George.
Any, any questions or comments for our township manager? If not, we'll move on to improve our commissioners' report, and we'll start off with our vice chairman, Commissioner Joe Bahco.
Thank you. As you heard in some of our resolutions and hires and retires, the highway department's a little shorthanded now. And I thank the board for hiring the one guy tonight that Putt needs the help. And I'm just going to ask that, as the part-time ones come in, if we can contact by email and approve them, to get them hired as soon as possible. You know, I don't want to have to wait till next month's meeting. As they come, we need help, so as they come, we'll inform you and go from there. Is everybody okay with that?
Did we already approve it?
Uh, yeah, so the.
As a hire comes.
Yeah, we approved the advertisement, and the common practice for the seasonal is that we've notified the board of the candidates and who we'd like to, and to kind of bring them along to get that seasonal work.
Have we got any new applications?
Uh, yes, we're up to five applications.
Okay, good.
We're expecting a couple more as well.
Good, all right. And last week, we also discussed the new generator being installed, but we're going to table it out the next month. We still have a couple answers to get on that. Next week, there's a possible meeting to discuss the capital project for the sewer authority for the new forced main and station upgrades. I guess it'll be advertised if the meeting's going to come about.
I believe, I believe the sewer board's going to do their own.
Okay.
That's a meeting between them and Lower Chai.
Lower Chai, yes.
Any questions for our vice chairman, Commissioner Joe Bahco?
Just the one traffic or the streetlights. At least, I don't know if that has anything to do with Wawa, if they hit anything or anybody that was working at the intersection. Main light at the booth, at the pharmacy parking lot that lights up that hole.
The Boothland Pharmacy parking lot?
I don't know if anybody hit something before when they were doing all that construction in the middle, but you need to send somebody out just to, our guys to see if it's a light or something that was underground when they were in that intersection, because it's not working, and it's dark over there.
You want to make our call to Marcus Putts on vacation? I know, I'll forget.
And they can let us know, and then get hold of Lisa if there was something else, if it has nothing to do with the pole.
If, if it's anything to do with any of the construction that will happen in Slene, I will invoice, have that invoice paid to the contractor.
Who was the other one that was doing the sewer work in, for the longest time on Chai, all the way up in Chai meeting house? Was that something different?
Southern Delaware County Authority was doing mining of the. SwrP was doing that work. I know because I stopped because they didn't have the appropriate flagging.
It was a mess.
Just using their hands on Chichester. That's how I found out.
So it's a slim possibility. It could be either contractor, it's not our issue, maybe.
The, this work, work was, is actually mine, so.
Right.
The interior of the place. So if anybody, if it's associated with anything, it could be with the Wawa. I, I'm sure that Scott contracted with you.
Slene usually gets out pretty quick.
If there's other questions, move on to Commissioner Nicole Whitaker.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a few updates. The library, oh, I should say, thank you to all the commissioners and community partners who submitted letters of support for the library's RCAP grant application process. Those letters were due on Monday, so they received lots of support. So thank you to all that, that sent those letters in. Again, as I mentioned last week, at some point, if you would all just share your comments and your feedbacks regarding the library and it's, the potential for it to be a, a board of the, of the township. So one of the committees, as with our planning or our health board, where we would take the library board on and try to help facilitate and move them forward in their efforts to get a standalone location within the township. The recreation department, so we are in the midst of accepting applications for summer camp. The age that was set for camp was initially eight, ages eight to thirteen. The age that was set for camp was initially eight, ages eight to 13. They decided to lower that age to ages six years old, so to start accepting children six years to age 13 to be more competitive with other camps in the area in hopes of getting more, more children enrolled. So that's, again, that starts in July. We also have the Johnson Street Park is, that's being funded by the Green Region Grant from Pico, is under construction. As the manager mentioned a few minutes ago, we had, I also have received calls about the park and the improvements and how surprised people are that we're actually doing something at that park. It's been a while, so they are happy about that. And just so people are aware that the handicap accessible interest is going to be from Alexander, which is going to be on the opposite side of the park from where it was originally. So it'll be, the steps will be on Johnson Avenue side, the handicap accessibility will be from Alexander, that side. Okay. Let's see, what else I have here. So our heart and soul, just to give you an update on heart and soul for the months throughout May and June, heart and soul, we'll be holding meetings to share and discuss the compiled action items. The purpose of these meetings is to elevate community interest and hopefully identify volunteers to form working committees. The next step is to set up the committee groups to draft action items and determine the priorities. All are welcome to join these, to join these groups to give your input and hear your ideas. We would hope that the commissioners would attend at least one of the meetings. And so the meetings are listed, the sense of community is May 24th, it's from 6:30 to 7:30. The recreation, first one was completed and another one is proposed for May 25th. Location and accessibility is scheduled, another one for May 25th. Economic opportunities is scheduled for May 26th. Education, another one is scheduled for June 1st. Safety with our police officers looking for, it's scheduled for June 2nd. So once these, once these meetings are held, the committees are going to finalize their recommendations and will, they'll come up with a, they're going to have a, looks like a heart and soul community open house summit on June 17th. So we'll obviously revisit this again at the June meeting, but this is just a heads up as to what is happening within two weeks. So if there's any events or any of these sessions that you'd like to attend as a commissioner you're interested in, please let Barb know so she can get you invited. As far as our grants, the Keystone Community, Keystone Communities was submitted on April 2nd for the extended Market Street Corridor Plan. This grant has two rounds of fundings. Hopefully, we will hear about the first round if we were awarded this, this summer. The second round will be due in the summer as well. The application for the second round will be due in the summer. To date, the awarded status, the police department training was awarded a $5,000 grant from Walmart Community Grant Fund. And we, the comprehensive recreation park and open space greenway plans, RFP, was advertised and we're waiting submissions now. And then finally, the Pennsylvania legislative updates. So I attended the April meeting for the executive, for the Executive Committee of First Class Townships. And a couple of things that I think that are important for the board to be aware of is the, you have your legislative priorities, local use of radar, that is actually is moving and is picking up. And one of the changes that they, that they stated was initially, they wanted police officers to have completed the required training course in order to, in order to be able to use radar. So that's one of the things that they've taken out of the, that they've taken out of the bill. So it's actually been moving, but some parts of the state are apprehensive about moving it. They see it as a money grab for opportunities for municipalities to get money, but it states that the municipal share of the revenue generated from the local use of radar will not exceed more than 10% of the municipality's annual budget. So I think it comes out to, and I'm not sure of Mike if you recall, but it's like $10 or $12. So it's not a huge amount of money that the municipalities would get from, you know, the speeding, the tickets for this, for this, for this item. So hopefully, a lot of the, the police departments are in favor of it, so we hope that it passes. Consumer fireworks, so that, when the state changed that, and we all know that that changed last year, and so now we're looking to basically repeal it because as a municipality, we cannot, we don't have the, we can't create laws or ordinances that supersede the state and they are not giving any, there's not enough power, I should say, for the local officers to like enforce. There's not enough information about that. So with their House Bill 988 is looking to repeal that altogether. So we'll see what, what happens with that. And then finally, just want to bring up something, it's not new business, so I'm just going to bring it up while I'm speaking. When we talked the last month about our veterans, right, our veterans and the flags. So I got a couple of phone calls from people that stated that they were informed that the flag, I guess it had sold out, maybe round one had sold out and they weren't given the opportunity to purchase a flag for a veteran. So one of the things that I was thinking as a township that we could do as an alternative is, or as another option, is have a display here at the township. We have a display cabinet out here or some sort of wall of honor to rotate them out, have family members bring up a picture or something where we could display our veterans, those that are currently serving, those that have served previously, so that way, you know, it's a permanent structure, much like the county. They have one at the government center of the county where they, where they, you know, honor their veterans throughout the year, right? And we could rotate those out. That would be a no-cost option to families. They could bring up their picture. We type up a little bio that goes underneath their photo and that would be something that we could do out, you know, throughout the year. That's something for the board to consider. That's all I have. Right, right, right. Absolutely. They would give us the information and we would just make it uniform so that was, you know, it would look nice.
Yes, I'm going to look into the feasibility of it, so I'll. You know what? Something we never finished, the blocks out front. There's still blocks available to fill there too. I think we need to bring that up.
Well, we talked about that too and I know the last time we talked about it with George, we were looking at redesigning that because of some of them, the wear and tear. So we talked about having them like kind of in the center and have the outside areas where people walk in be, you know, plain, but have those in the center so the ones that are with the names aren't worn out. So that was the thought and that's a project, right? So that's something we definitely talked about and we should do.
And that's still on our radar. Putt and I actually were out there just a couple of weeks ago, we talking about that area. You know, we have the, the rocks right up against the building as well. We get a lot of trash in that area. So, you know, we recently used the township planner to design us a new area for, the sign for the complex out on Alpha Fury Road, and I think this would be a good project to have them take a look at and just determine and then work with the township engineer to come up with a solution. You know, they are right in the path of where everybody walks and right in the path where we have to throw salt and everything. So it'd be nice to like get them to a point where they don't get damaged like that.
And I, something else we could throw on the table there, since we're, I mean, it's a great idea, I have no problems on any of it, but on the new Brooklyn Town Center and the park and the memorial going over there for World War I vets, the, everything else we had there has to go back in there. We could find some, the backside of the wall, memorial for all veterans with plates or whatever. I don't know how that would work. I mean, that's all the.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
To get that and that'd be the memorial park for the veterans there. I don't know what the cause is. Once the wall is built, we'll know the size, we'll know what could be attached to it if it can't be or the bricks or whatever in that whole walkway, I don't know. I mean, if we're going to do this, I think it's a good idea. I don't know, I know we're all so busy with everything, we might want some VFW to say, hey, you got any volunteers to give us ideas to improve here and there and see what we could come up with. And in the building also, I mean, it's a good idea. I don't understand, you're saying you're in the first round and what, people can't get any more flags?
Not that.
The first round, we had it sold out.
They sold out like 75, so they had to get the first two to rent. They're going to do another one.
Right, that's what I said, the first round.
I can discuss with Officer Eddie Brickman, the.
Yeah, season boss.
He would be the best person.
Oh, okay.
The veteran. Do you mind if I just comment real quickly on local radar?
Oh, yeah, sure. Thanks.
So I'm not one for excuses, but with currently the way that, that, that local police are able to track speeders is very antiquated. It's a three-person process, so we keep a platoon of four officers on during the shift. So to, to set up a speed trap to be able to, to stop someone from speeding right now, we need three officers at that location essentially the entire time. So it does become to a point where it gets a little.
Easy to speed on the radar.
The use of local radar, the apprehension is from those smaller towns and, and you know, Pennsylvania is a very diverse state, so I can absolutely understand why that happens. But in a town like this that's bisected by I-95, 322, and we just get an exorbitant amount of car traffic, it would be very beneficial. So I do think as this gets traction, we need to make sure we stay on top of our local, our state elected officials to ensure that they vote for the best interest of the community.
When it comes to that point in time, I believe the board should consider maybe writing a letter to our state representatives indicating that we are in favor of radar. I believe it will help our local police department tremendously also. So at that point in time, I think the board should, should, should consider sending those letters. All right, with that said, we'll move on to Commissioner Ed Brickowski.
Thank you. All reports are on file this month. The Breuthman Town Center Task Force will, will be meeting May 24th to get prepared for the public gathering in June. And other than that, just one comment that was stated with, because I heard it today with the elections and everything and all the work that's going along Meeting House Road, they're not going to block the entrance. They're doing the paving in front of Brooklyn Firehouse, only going up to the middle of their driveway tomorrow, I think it is, and at the latest Monday to get it paved and they'll finish after Tuesday, so there's not going to be any blockage getting in and out of the firehouse because I know the firehouse now with the hall rentals are extremely busy because everybody's having enough and getting things done. And the back part of the parking lot will be open for the, probably about a week or two, just to keep the traffic flowing. So if anybody was concerned about that, it will not be blocked for Tuesday and thank everybody for their services during the month and it's been pretty busy.
Any questions for Commissioner Brickowski? That will move on to Commissioner Joe Geary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. The financial reports are available in the office for anybody's review, as is the police department report. I would like to ask if we could start getting the tax collections report. I thought that was pretty helpful when we got it for a couple of months, if we could move forward. Just to address some of the speeding issues, I was speaking to the chief this week about some of that. And, you know, we don't have a traffic unit right now and we're short officers anyway because some people are out, but he is looking into purchasing, to pricing, a sign that does not only the speeding, it takes all of the data, the speeding, the traffic, all of that, and we could perhaps position people there to monitor the situation and monitor these areas where, where people are speeding. Because I know we have a lot of them in my, I'm sure we have them in all the wards, but I know on Larkin Road especially, you know, because there are two significant depressions, so they come speeding down. We, we did purchase the temporary signs and I was wondering, I think Lisa, this might be something that Putt had discussed with you, you know, the temporary signs, like we have them down on Meeting House Road down where we own the road, basically. What is the problem with placing them in other areas like Larkin Road?
Out to Anthony Antonelli, who's the coordinator for Penn Dot for this sort of sets. That's about him. But he was, I believe it was he was going to go to. For any. From Penn Dot. He's, he's the gentleman that's been helping with the signs.
Okay.
I thought, I thought Putt was going. Going from a permitting standpoint. It's their temporary, I know just from, from the issue with car dealers over the weekend and speaking to Branny, Branny at Penn Dot Friday night, he had mentioned that to put signs up, but they have to be outside of the. Have to be considered. Make, give Branny a call back and see if he can do some of that.
Okay, if you couldn't, and then I'll follow up with Putt on, I believe he's back Monday?
Yeah, he's back Monday. We did, we ran into some issues with the signs, so the difference between the breakaway poles and the, the stationary poles with a, a concrete base. So, you know, ideally, to be able to handle the, the solar panel poles, we need like a, a larger pole. That's where the problem comes in really, because the breakaway poles, we have some ability to put them in the right ways, but that's where we've been running into some snafus. Now on township bond roads, it's pretty easy to handle, but unfortunately, the, the big problem areas are those state highways. So we have been working through them and Alfredo was also working to get these. But, you know, the culmination of those signs, the sign we had and they're cooking at the trailer, they are addressing speeding and looking at all the ways that they can do that.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Neary? That will wrap up with my report. Just a couple of brief items. As indicated, the Larry Jackson extension ends next month, I believe that's June 10th. To this point, we haven't received any new plans indicating any further development. No new plans come in, we will be forced to make a decision next month whether to approve or not approve. So it's just, we'll make the board aware of that. Received word today from our assistant township manager that we have a potential hotel coming in. Plans were submitted, we'll, we'll get all the paperwork documented and those plans will be disseminated to the board shortly. Lastly, Willowbrook Clubhouse, the punch list, last week, Baacko indicated that there was a punch list. I just want to let the board know that under new construction, a CO is issued and that's usually done by our BCO. I called our zoning officer up to see if there will be a life safety inspection to be done on the building, a, which is our UNO, use and occupancy. And we had a discussion that he typically does not do life safety inspections on new construction. I think maybe that's a topic of conversation for the board to have at a later moment of time. I did call Mr. Gavin, I asked him to reach out to our fire marshal to see if he would like to participate in any inspections on the new construction that is going on or if he would be fine with Catania Engineering just issuing, issuing a CO without any of his input. So I believe Mr. Gavin's going to be calling our fire marshal to see if he would like to participate in that final inspection prior to a CO being issued, which I, which I think would be wise. Okay. Um I don't have anything else on, is the board has anything to report or ask me?
Yeah, I'm I'm confused there. We have a list as long as my arm for a checklist form for Willowbrook Clubhouse, and we're going to issue him a CO?
Not issuing a CO until the work is completed.
All right, I just want to make make that clear. Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm I'm hearing you, and you're saying they're going over and look for life safety and then the uh
Let me let me pre-phrase. Going, I said, last week we discussed the punch list. That work has to be completed. Once that work is completed, there's going to be a final inspection to give a CO. I called a zoning officer to see if he was going to participate in that process. He said to me, he does not inspect new construction for life safety issues. But maybe that's a topic that the board the board should have to see if we should be doing that. Then I then I stated that I've asked, I talked to Bill Gavin to reach out to our fire marshal to see if he would like to participate in that final inspection after the work is completed. See if everything is acceptable in order to issue a CO.
That's fine.
What what will happen is typically, those of the inspections can happen concurrently. My inspection is complete for the MPC punch list, for the land development punch list. They will not issue a U N O until my punch list is complete and their punch list is complete. So they have not done a final inspection, nor have they been asked to do a final inspection. They give them the temporary for employees to be in the building, but no further um occupancy for that building.
They are moving in office equipment and preparing it uh for for use. But again, um there's still a punch list. There's still concerns that have to be met before any CO will be issued.
I have a question on the hotel, if yous are done.
Yes, go ahead.
Um when I first got on the board, I remember there was talk of a hotel going on out by three twenty-two. And there was, I think there is a tax, a resolution or something we passed way back then that if a hotel's ever built, we get a a a tax or some type of turnkey fee or something. Can we look into that?
Yeah, I mean, this was brought up before, and I couldn't find anything
Right.
ordinances that indicated that we had uh had some type of fee. I I believe, uh depending on the year of when that was done, there were some laws that were put in place for as far as like hotel taxes and stuff like that. Um so uh
Mike, we might be grandfathered in now if we passed it. Right, I mean, I think we should look into it, is what I'm getting at, all right? Because I think it was every time a room changed hands, we we got a fee. Yes, I I don't, I couldn't remember exactly what it's called.
So the potential location is at the Eagle Ground, Ballfields?
Yes, but we passed a ordinance or a resolution or something to, you know, I'm not sure what. I can't remember, because it was like twelve years ago.
Were you on the board that happened?
I I just got, yeah, it was very beginning.
Huh, it's a micro hotel.
Right, for three twenty-two.
Yes, it was supposed to
Let me check my records.
Okay. I mean, because I mean, it's it's money for us, it's money for the township. All right, that's all.
All right, if there's any other questions, um I'm glad the board is back together again, meeting in person.
I have something, I have something new business, if you want to do that way.
Yes, we can do that.
Real quick, I like as we know, um some of this, there, I'm sure George, Nicole, and it was mentioned before that the COVID money is being dispersed to this as a pass-through with the state. I'd like to form a committee with myself, Joe Biaco, and the ordinance engineer to prepare some plans to be ready for this. Uh and ready is my understanding is actually next month, is some of this money is being passed through uh in June. With my research I've been doing, I'd like to start getting we have a lot of issues, and I I know there's probably some even with Mr. Commissioner Neary's out of order that we weren't able to do, but there may be something we can do. And if we have this money that the state we have, half of it's coming in June of twenty twenty-one, the other half is twenty twenty-two. Must be spent by twenty twenty-four. And a lot of it you could use for your stormwater management.
So on one page, uh it's a hundred and fifty-one-page Treasury report, I'm on page one oh one right now. I spoke to PF, uh an individual from PFM. That is still one of the items that they are waiting on clarification for. Uh obviously, Pennsylvania, everybody throughout the state has stormwater, and they're lobbying very hard for that uh to be included in that Treasury report. However, right now, it's still uh indicating water and uh and sewer. So we we uh absolutely, we need to figure something out for this. Uh there is still no definitive guideline of whether or not sewer uh stormwater will be uh applicable. One of the biggest things, too, is that right now, the core component of the the Treasury document is that the the justification of the cost has to be in response to COVID nineteen. So I think we're on, we're on the right track. We're just hoping, and there is some lobbying going on at the federal level to get that taken care of.
Yeah, but it it also states stormwater investment. So like I said, my contacts and your contacts need to start to be on the same page. Anyway, I don't want to be two steps behind when, if we could start our plan, because I I know three spots in my area already. One that just came up even during COVID that we couldn't even get to at the end of Rockhurst Avenue. Uh the other one's at McKay Avenue, I've been talking. Uh Catania Firm did the planning already for the study over there with all the stormwater from Third Avenue to Fifth, I think it was. In that area, there was already something going to plan in that area. Uh then there's other areas throughout the township that if the money's there, George, we need to use it.
So 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 everything does have to be related to COVID, right? Which is crazy, so you have to figure out how how are you going to relate it to COVID? Right, so it's very, it's it's a huge document, a lot of information, it's very unclear. One thing that, one of the things that is clear is like broadband, right? That's one of the things, and that can be related to COVID. We had to go, you had to go viral, you had to be online, you had to be on Zoom, kids were out of school. How many families were not able to have accessibility to um to the internet because of, you know, finances, families out of work, things of that nature? So there's several projects that the township could take on um once we get clarity on how to, you know, how to spend the money. Um it's just, it's frustrating because you have this, you know, savior, this whole thing like, oh, this, we're getting all this money, and you know, the CARES Act money is here, and and then you can't do anything with it. Like, you're restricted, and it has to be related to COVID, and you have to figure out how to be creative and how to use utilize it and say, this is COVID-related, right?
And I think what this, what I'm asking for for the committee uh is to start getting some of this information, get it together to say, you're right, uh infrastructure, too. I mean, does it, I mean, it's going to be already tricky, word, to be able to do any of this.
Right, I mean, it is.
I just don't want to be, if it if it's going to happen in June of this year, and that's often, where does that money have to sit? If you're earmarking what they're giving us, does it have to stay in a separate account, so it's
Right, you got
So uh so the way that we'll do it is um, so we're we're entitled up to one point seven million dollars if we can come up with qualified expenses for the one point seven. Uh we'll get the the first distribution will be passed through the state sometime in June. Uh it'll have to go into an account. Uh I've been discussing with Pliggett, who handles typically our reserve money. I've got all the paperwork to set up the account. Uh they're setting it up uh through Pliggett to be able to handle a lot of the reporting requirements because it will be subject to a federal audit. There's uh various requirements throughout the process of all of what uh what it's going to take. So so the the out of the one point seven, we are going to have a pretty heavy administrative costs that we're going to have to reach out.
Right, and you and
Yeah, so it'll be segregated, we'll set up a new fund for specifically for those funds to sit in. Uh it is allowed to go interest-bearing, so there's no interest with banks right now, so.
Right, and and you're correct about the audit, it has to be audited and all that, but that 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 could come out of that money that you're you're
Right.
receiving, it's not coming out of our general and to do through the job. I just want to make sure that we're on the next level uh to move forward with everything, all options. I mean, we just say, I mean, not just wait until it gets in, then tell you, now we're going to do it. And I think Joe and I would like to participate in it, and anybody else, I have no problem. I just
Yeah.
be ready for it.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to suggest we use our current engineer because she's aware of this. Uh the firm is aware of the current stormwater, many of the stormwater issues. And rather than recreating the wheel and bringing in someone who's not familiar with the design, some of the designs.
Well, I think I think they have
Uh my question is, if you could use the alternate engineer, wouldn't our township engineers still have to review everything?
I know that I can't, I'm not sure what it is. I'm like, name the projects, they'll be on that what the future is in the township. Now I have full, full confidence in in that abilities, I've known it for a long, long time.
I agree with you, just in your, I think we're around deep in the house.
Uh this this is a separate project, I think, I mean, she has, that firm has enough to do for the whole township completely. What's wrong with your ordinance, so it's just separate? And if there's any questions, he's already working with her now, or the firm, they go back and forth all the time anyway. And our ordinance does. Three or four plans already this year in this town, or he's not unfamiliar.
Yeah, just two other convertance, there's a requirement from the federal government that you uh that you form a uh some type of citizen uh approach to spending this money.
Mm-hmm.
So uh and as well as, they're really, really, you know, they're pretty clear that this is not their infrastructure bill.
Right.
This is their relief bill. So uh we, it may end up being that that uh we're going to need to have some type of appointed uh committee. We will have some guidance from PML probably by the end of the week as they get through the bill as well. So what I could do is get out a, get that out to everybody to get a better understanding of what the steps. Essentially, they're going to put together a list of steps of how you can qualify and what you can qualify for.
Right.
The 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 general intent of the money is to try to find a way to pass this through to your residents
To your residents and businesses.
So to make up for lost income, uh help cover costs that they weren't able to take care of during that uh during during COVID. They did put in that component with water, uh sewer, and like I said, this, they are lobbying at the state level to try to get stormwater included into this. So again, all good ideas, uh we just, once we have that clear guidance of the process that we're going to have to follow, uh you know, I need to do us a lot, do a lot of work and get this all together, and we do a community outreach program, and they say, we want you to do a distribution to each person of, you know, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, as opposed to using it for infrastructure. And then we have to then justify to the federal government why we didn't go with what came out of that outreach to the public. So it is, it's just a little tricky, though. Uh it does look like it's this this silver bullet to fix the problem, right? The money's coming down, but uh you know, it's 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 constrained a lot, a lot more than the CARES Act money was, which we didn't see any of. So I just think uh absolutely, we need to have a plan forward. I think if we hold off just a couple of days till we get some more guidance, and I can finish reading through that document, it'll probably get you a good path of this is how we can kind of get to that point of getting that committee together.
I think it's a good idea, Ed. Uh I just like to vet out the process a little bit. I just like to vet out what George is reading through a little bit more before we make any final decisions.
That's fine.
All right, uh any other news business? Okay, now, may I have a question?
Um second.
On favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.